Clean those, and that's Californians.
This arrow shows where the stormwater facility is located, right here underneath my feet. Now, the facility is made up of two large cisterns which captures and cleans more than 1 million gallons of rain and runoff.
And this project, in part, is going to help to have more water, to use less energy to bring water to Los Angeles.
Officials hope the new stormwater facility and park improvements will help the overall health of the environment and Garvanza residents. I'm Yana Kay for LA this week.
Garvanza Park has received nearly $4.2 million worth of improvements over the last five years. The Port of Los Angeles serves as the gateway for imports and exports for the nation, but it's now undergoing a makeover that's set to make it a major tourist destination as well. Cindy San Luis has the story.
It's all about the water, bringing the sea to the city and the city to the sea.
Community members joined city council members and the Port of Los Angeles to break ground on the initial phase of the San Pedro waterfront project, creating a water cut to ready the downtown adjacent section of the San Pedro waterfront for a new public open space and harbor area.
Los Angeles could have the kind of grand waterfront promenade that one day could rival the waterfronts in San Diego, or San Francisco, or Oakland, or across the bridge in Long Beach.
The project will cut into approximately 1.2 acres of existing waterfront land along Harbor Boulevard between Fire Station 112 to the north and the L.A. Maritime Museum to the south, creating a new harbor inlet for vessels to dock and approximately 700 linear feet of promenade.
Now, over the next five years, we'll invest $1.5 billion in capital improvement projects at the port, creating nearly 20,000 jobs.
This project is a key component of the $1.2 billion San Pedro waterfront development plan passed in 2009.
The crown jewel of the San Pedro waterfront plan slated to be completed in 2014, this $38.5 million project will be a destination for Angelenos and tourists alike.
This phase of the project is the first to be built under the port's new project labor agreement, which will ensure safe, quality projects and job opportunities for local and disadvantaged residents.
When the tall ships sailed into this downtown harbor in 2014, they will drop anchor in an entirely new place, a vibrant place, vibrant center of activity here at the downtown San Pedro area.
The waterfront is LA's door to the sea, and this project provides the doorsteps to our enjoyment of the San Pedro waterfront. From the Port of Los Angeles, I'm Cindy San Luis for LA this week.
Development of the downtown harbor town square and promenade will follow at a cost of approximately $17.5 million and is expected to be completed in late 2014 or early 2015. It's one thing to see your favorite celebrity on the TV or movie screen, but one program aimed at encouraging kids to read is bringing Hollywood stars to your local library. Gil Reyes explains.
All those high flying types and Lou Bird likes me?
Here's the 411 on this former star of TV's Beverly Hills 90210. Actress and mom Jenny Garth enjoys reading to children, and she's taking that love to the library.
It's important for parents to remember that we are fostering a love of reading to our children, so it's up to us.
Garth teams with Cheerios Cereals Breakfast and a Book Program. The goal is to get kids excited about reading through celebrity reading events. Cheerios is also taking this effort to America's breakfast tables. For the past decade, it's offered surprises inside specially marked cereal boxes, not toys, not stickers, but English and Spanish language books.
Eres un ávila que explora los cielos.
LA Mayor Antonio Villarigosa joins in on the fun by reading the Spanish language version of Mem Fox's Hello Baby.
Just a great opportunity to get kids into the habit of reading and the knowledge that, and the pleasure that comes with it.
Cheerios is also helping by donating $2,500 to LA City Libraries, also 5,000 books to the First Book Los Angeles Program to help ensure that low-income kids have reading material at home. Gil Reyes for LA this week.
Cheerios is set to host other celebrity reading events in cities including Charlotte, North Carolina, and Seattle, Washington. And for some at-risk kids here in the city, reading is also the newest weapon, helping to keep them safe from gangs in their neighborhood. Anna Marcos takes us to the grand opening of a brand-new library at the Ramona Gardens Housing Development.
Can a book really save a kid from gangs? Organizers at this East LA housing project are counting on it. The Housing Authority of the City of LA, which runs the Ramona Gardens projects, opened this library after staff members found out kids here were afraid to use the local libraries for fear of running into gangs.
When my kids were in high school, it was, we couldn't go to any library either. It was really hard to go to the one-on-city terrorists or the one-on-wall bash or anything, just because of the gangs. But now that we have our library for our kids, now that's a different story.
The library is part of the Step Up Literary Initiative, a new push by the Housing Authority to give kids in the projects a leg up on academic learning.
We're trying to create a multi-level program to try to hit every one of our kids in the community. The key to success for all our kids is education.
So here it is, 3,000 books donated by Scholastic Inc., a book publisher, another 2,000 books donated by the L.A. Public Library, while volunteers donated 500 books and schools donated textbooks, all in this beautifully renovated modular building. Even the cops are part of this all-out effort to keep kids here safe, happy, and successful.
Not your typical patrolling where you're inside of a vehicle and you're responding to radio calls. You're actually coming out, you park your car, and you start walking around. You get to mingle with the community. The community knows most of us by our first name, so that is a completely new concept. So having a library here is, we're going to also go in and, you know, assist them with their homework and do whatever it is that we can.
No more need to worry about stepping on gang turf anymore. When you step into the land of books, everyone is welcome. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
Organizers hope to start a storytelling hour at the new library as well as reading programs for adults and those who speak English as a second language. As other baseball leagues struggle to find players, the West Hills Baseball League is celebrating more than four decades in existence, and now there's even more to celebrate as the community puts in place safety improvements at the busy park.
(singing) That's why I'm glad.
Over 600 West Hills Baseball League players and their families gathered to celebrate the opening day of West Hills Baseball League's 42nd season. And as if that weren't reason enough to celebrate...
In addition to what we're doing today, we have a new crosswalk, a new traffic light, and a new parking lot we established across the street in cooperation with L.A. County as a flood control area. And for many years, we've been trying to add additional parking because turnout from the parents and the youth of this community, not sufficient parking.
The improvements to the West Hills baseball fields and recreation center and surrounding areas were completed in time for the opening day festivities, and parents say not a day too soon.
It was so needed. We thank God for the new parking lot and the crosswalk, finally, safety. It's been a, it was pretty scary not having that crosswalk because it gets crowded and busy here. The only accidents we've had have been fender benders, but it was just a matter of time, in my opinion, had they not put the improvements in.
Now, kids and their parents won't have to worry about dodging vehicles on the busy Valley Circle Boulevard.
Most importantly, the safety of the kids not being able to cross the street when they are parking across.
What the kids see in these improvements goes beyond safety. They see just how much the community cares.
It looks great, it looks amazing, and the way they've upgraded it through the years is fantastic.
The parking lot was funded through propositions K and 40. The new parking lot has 62 stalls, perimeter fencing, and solar light fixtures for security, just to name a few of its features. Well, it's not very often that customers get singled out to receive recognition, but that's exactly what the Los Angeles International Airport did with its first-ever customs office customer from 50 years ago when the facility first opened. Anita Bennett has the story.
For Guy Fox and his family, this is a very special day.
It's really an event that can be cherished, you know, the rest of our lives because this is a historical event, and all over one simple little customs entry.
That customs entry was filed 50 years ago when LAX opened its first facility for international cargo.
When Guy Fox was here that morning, there really wasn't much fanfare. As I understand, he was the only person standing in line to be the first custom filer. So here we all are here to celebrate that.
On the anniversary of his filing, Guy was honored at the LAX Flight Path Learning Center Museum.
You are truly an angel in the city of angels. Congratulations, Mr. Fox.
He received a proclamation from the L.A. City Council, plus a certificate from Orange County leaders. U.S. Customs and Border Protection also sent a representative to mark the anniversary of its LAX facility.
That process now allowed us to clear cargo here from LAX as opposed to from downtown Los Angeles, bringing greater efficiencies and really opening the door for growth of the international air cargo here in LAX.
Now, Guy even had a photo snapped of himself on that historic day, and that picture is now on permanent display here at the museum.
Nobody really thought that this was significant except for me. And nobody was really recognizing the fact that it was changing the dynamics of customs clearances, but I did.
Now, 50 years later, the word is finally out. At LAX, I'm Anita Bennett for LA this week.
Before 1962, it took up to three days for international goods to be released from downtown. Now, the process is almost instantaneous. North Hollywood's El Pratol Theater turned into Tinseltown for one night as future stars strutted their stuff at the Second Annual Los Angeles Student Media Festival. This year, the city-run award show included students countywide. Anna Marcos reports.
They may still be in high school, but these young filmmakers are already walking the red carpet. Thirty-two of them beat out close to 300 aspiring movie makers to win awards in the Second Annual L.A. Student Media Festival.
Um, the film name is Blank. It's supposed to be telling a story without any dialogue. And we basically had like two, three days of filming, and then basically mostly it was guerrilla filming.
It's really exciting and a new concept because I do want to go into animation.
These guys took Best of Show and a $1,000 scholarship for their winning documentary.
What inspired me to make this film was I, I just, I wound up with these horse trainers, and the fact that, you know, he only had one arm, really, it just made me realize, you know, how lucky we kind of are, and I thought that we could definitely take this story and make it into something inspirational for everyone.
Lots of picture posing and paparazzi, just like the real Oscars. But this is the only award show for high school wannabe filmmakers in Southern California. It's the brainchild of Councilmember Paul Krikorian.
This is a great opportunity for us to highlight the incredible creativity of some of our high school students throughout Los Angeles, really to see the depth and the breadth of what they have to say. And at the same time, it's an off, it's an opportunity for us to highlight the next generation of talent.
(singing) I need a woman gonna hold my hand, wants somebody to love, make me a happy man.
From the next generation of movie makers to the next generation of pop divas, this was a night for future stars to shine. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
Besides the $1,000 scholarship, other prizes included lunch with industry people, filmmaking workshops, and more. For more information, visit lasmf.lacity.org. The L.A. Fire Department under scrutiny for misreporting response times, and speeders beware on a deadly stretch of Sunset Boulevard. Also, a rarely-known airport police unit receives recognition. These stories and more in City Beat.
Fire Chief Brian Cummings coming under fire after admitting he did not clearly communicate data about the department's emergency response times to city council members before they voted to approve a plan that eliminated 18 fire companies and four ambulance companies as part of the 2011-2012 budget process. The data presented to the mayor suggested first responders made it to the scene of medical emergencies within five minutes 78% of the time. The department has since acknowledged that crews were meeting the five-minute goal 63% of the time prior to 2009. The L.A. Department of Transportation has installed two speed feedback signs on a deadly stretch of Sunset Boulevard in Brentwood. Two years ago, a 13-year-old girl was killed there when she was struck by a car as she walked to a school bus. Each speed indicator sign has a radar and solar component and provides feedback to passing motorists about their current speed. Not many know about the Airport Police Dignitary Protection Unit, but when dignitaries like the Duke and Duchess of Cambridge come to Los Angeles, it is the DPU's job to protect them as they arrive at and depart from Los Angeles World Airport's three airports. And recently, the L.A. Board of Airport Commissioners publicly honored the five-member unit.
They run almost 200 operations a month, or almost 2,400 a year. That's about seven per day, and as you can imagine, some are far, far more complex and involved than others.
The Dignitary Protection Unit, which serves LAX, Ontario, and Van Nuys airports, was established in 1986.
(singing) Oh Danny Boy, I love you so.
A rendition of an Irish-American favorite, Danny Boy, and bagpipes filled the City Hall Council chambers as the city celebrated St. Patrick's Day.
We must not forget the impact the Irish made to California's success. Remember that without, that it was Mulholland, an Irishman from Northern Ireland who brought water to this great city.
Councilman Tom Labonge also handed out proclamations to members of the community who have engaged in activities that highlight Irish-American culture.
And also on St. Patrick's Day, good deeds were performed as L.A.'s first responders shaved their heads to raise money for cancer research. Gil Reyes tells us what St. Baldriks Day was all about.
Bald is beautiful. Just ask these 200 or so cops, firefighters, and other volunteers. They're going a cut above the rest for a good cause.
Well, we're here to raise money for cancer research. Essentially, we're competing a little bit against the firefighters to see which of us can raise more funds.
Together, they've raised over $100,000 for pediatric cancer research. That's the buzz at this year's St. Baldriks Day event. Why is it called St. Baldriks? Well, it takes place around St. Patrick's Day, hence the green theme. As for the bald part, these pictures tell the story. Here's Dr. Clark Anderson before his haircut, and here he is after.
The St. Baldriks Foundation, all right, has helped fund cancer research for all children with cancer, and it has increased the survival over 20%.
Anything that we can do to help get back to the community, this cause is incredibly important. You see a bunch of children, firefighters, law enforcement, the communities come together.
For some, the changes are pretty dramatic.
It looks like a mystery right now because I can't see what they're doing, but I'm certain that it'll come out okay.
For others, it's just a mild trim. Call it sheer luck on St. Baldriks Day for Councilman Dennis Zine.
I'm doing it for the good cause, and I'll donate blood after this, all for the great event. Thank you very, very much, and back to you at the studio.
In North Hollywood, Gil Reyes for LA this week.
Farther south, first responders held a similar St. Baldriks Day fundraiser in San Pedro. And in this week's list of things to do, creating art with chalk on a historical piece of sidewalk, pancakes and horses, and learning about food sustainability.
You don't need a canvas or paintbrush to draw the L.A. skyline. Try the urban canvases of the walkways outside the Chinese-American museum at El Pueblo Plaza and a few sticks of chalk. On Saturday, March 31st, the museum is hosting chalk art and inviting the public to envision and draw their own vibrant buildings right on the historic sidewalks of El Pueblo Plaza. The family-friendly event is free and chalk will be provided. It takes place from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Chinese-American Museum located at 425 North Los Angeles Street. The event, sponsored by The Getty, is inspired by the museum's newest exhibit, Breaking Ground: Chinese-American Architects in Los Angeles, 1945 to 1980. More info can be found at camla.org. If you love horses and you love pancakes, then you won't want to miss the Ride On Therapeutic Horsemanship's annual open house and free pancake breakfast on Saturday, March 31st at the Ride On Ranch at 10860 Topanga Canyon Boulevard in Chatsworth. It takes place from 9:00 a.m. to noon. Ride On offers physical therapy on horseback for sport, exercise, and recreation for children and adults with special needs. While enjoying a delicious free pancake breakfast, you'll get to learn about the services Ride On provides, see their facility, and learn about volunteer opportunities. For more information, contact Sarah Jones at sarah@ridon.org. Saturday, March 31st is also the Good Food Fair: A Taste of the San Fernando Valley. It happens from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Silmar High School Football Field at 13050 Borden Avenue in Silmar. The event, part of the mayor's Day of Service, is a chance for Angelenos to unite in performing service projects that focus on building a more just and sustainable food system. There will be games, prizes, and of course, food. Call 818-833-3709 or email kvonia@laep.org. And remember, you can find this information on our Facebook page, and that's a look at some upcoming things to do.
And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA this week.
Sergio in Pacoima, you are watching L.A. City View 35, our city, our channel.
Can the massive water demands of a self-contained community be environmentally friendly?
Can expanding the number of transportation systems actually help improve air quality?
Can a community's electrical needs be met in an energy-efficient way?
Can world-class airports be innovators and friends of the environment in their use of energy?
Yes.
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 As challenging and complex as these questions truly are, three Southern California airports are offering innovative and positive answers through new technologies and a deep commitment to environmental progress. This is the environment of the Los Angeles World Airport that owns and operates three major Southern California airports. Los Angeles International Airport is among the busiest commercial airports in the world. L.A.-Ontario International ranks among the top 10 busiest airports in California, and Van Nuys is among the world's top general aviation airports. Los Angeles World Airport, a department of the City of Los Angeles, has been working in partnership with the surrounding communities to address their concerns, mitigate impacts, and enhance the environment. The airports are accomplishing this by using clean fuels, cutting-edge water reclamation techniques, building architecture and design, and protection of fragile wildlife habitats. Without a doubt, air pollution is a fact of life in Southern California, especially in the Los Angeles Basin and the inland empire. Granted, it's not a very clear picture, but advances are taking place where the picture and the air are becoming a lot clearer. A significant amount of airport-related pollutants come from ground vehicles. Fortunately, Los Angeles World Airport was quick to recognize this and attack the problem at its source. To help reduce the amount of ground transportation emissions, Los Angeles World Airport began introducing alternative-fuel vehicles in the early 1990s. Today, more than 70% of the fleet at LAX is comprised of alternative-fuel vehicles, and it is the largest such fleet at any U.S. airport. Buses, shuttles, and other vehicles that run on natural gas burn 99% cleaner than those with diesel or gasoline-operated engines. To reduce emissions even more, these airports implemented a highly-successful, award-winning employee rideshare and carpool program. LAX also makes it easier for travelers to leave their cars at home. The LAX Fly Away is an inexpensive, non-stop bus service that transports passengers to and from the airport. The service currently operates from several locations throughout Southern California. LAX Fly Away buses serve over 1.5 million passengers annually, removing more than a million vehicle trips from local roads and from LAX. At the same time, air pollution and traffic congestion at L.A.-Ontario International Airport have been reduced significantly thanks to this magnificent 15,000-square-foot ground transportation facility, where a fleet of alternative-fuel courtesy trams have replaced gas-burning car rental vans and shuttle buses. In years past, a high level of air pollutants came from idling aircraft that ran their engines to heat and cool the passenger cabin and to supply electricity to cabin cleaning crews. But the installation of ground power units at nearly every LAX and L.A.-Ontario gate allows pilots to shut off their engines, thus eliminating tons of aircraft pollutants Los Angeles International Airport took the lead in water conservation when it became one of the first properties on L.A.'s west side to irrigate its landscaping and native California plants with recycled water. Through a network of pipes emanating from a nearby water treatment plant, LAX and its surrounding neighborhoods enjoy sizable savings in water consumption, as well as an uninterrupted supply of recycled water to keep grass, flowers, and plants thriving, even during severe drought conditions. Not having enough water is a familiar fact of life in Southern California, but there are times when too much water can be an even bigger problem, not just to rush hour traffic, but to the vast waters of the Pacific Ocean. However, in a concentrated effort to protect the ocean by reducing storm drain pollution, Los Angeles World Airport's Environmental Services Division has implemented a stormwater pollution prevention program at each of its airports. Throughout the rainy season, airport personnel use strategically placed monitoring stations to observe, collect, and analyze runoff samples, that's to determine if and how much contamination enters the surrounding storm drains. Clearly, protecting and preserving water, one of our most precious natural resources, is an issue that Los Angeles World Airport continues to address in several significant and substantive ways. Despite its heavy energy demands, Los Angeles World Airport has nevertheless made tremendous strides in energy conservation. It has committed to a 25% green power use in all LAX facilities. Green power includes electricity generated by solar, wind, hydropower, biomass, and geothermal sources. The terminals at L.A.-Ontario International Airport, which opened in 1998, were designed and built with energy conservation as a top priority. As a result, the terminal buildings are facing north, and the windows are made with a special energy-efficient glass. Inside, the terminal's ceiling systems are designed to distribute light without radiating heat throughout the building. These features make the airport aesthetically pleasing and comfortable for travelers while being on the cutting edge of green design. Lawa is prioritizing energy conservation and green building practices in all of its airport construction projects. In addition to achieving LEED Silver for the renovation of the International Terminal at LAX, environmental performance standards are also incorporated into the new additions to the Bradley International Terminal, the Replacement Central Utility Plant, and the Airport Rescue Firefighting Facility. Through these efforts, Los Angeles World Airport has succeeded in setting new standards for airports in energy efficiency and environmental design. With the advent of commercial jet aircraft, one of the most obvious and troublesome issues was how best to reduce the noise impact on surrounding neighborhoods. To address this problem, Los Angeles World Airport initiated a strict noise management program that includes a noise monitoring system, construction of airport sound barriers, and development of onsite noise abatement procedures. But these noise management efforts are not confined to the airports alone. In the mid-1980s, Los Angeles World Airport implemented its residential sound insulation program. Almost all of the more than 9,000 single and multifamily residences adjacent to LAX and more than 1,000 at Van Nuys have been soundproofed. The modifications include installation of acoustically-rated solid-core doors, double-pane windows and air conditioners, as well as acoustic chimney louvers and vent dampers. These measures help reduce aircraft noise inside homes by as much as 50%, giving airport neighbors more comfortable living environments. Another facet of Los Angeles World Airport's commitment to environmental concerns is its recycling program. At Los Angeles International Airport, for example, nearly 21,000 tons of waste is recycled annually, and 900 tons are put to other uses. That means more than 2/3 of LAX's solid waste is diverted from landfills each year. Even food can be a prime candidate for recycling. In 2009, LAX tenants reported that over 5,000 pounds of packaged and prepared food... In 2009, LAX tenants reported that over 5,000 pounds of packaged and prepared food from airline caterers are distributed annually to local food banks. Between the western edge of the Pacific Ocean and just below the flight path at Los Angeles International Airport, a rather remarkable ecological success story is evolving on a 200-acre wildlife preserve. Thanks to a visionary and aggressive restoration project implemented by Los Angeles World Airports in the 1980s, these native plants and animals, once destined for extinction, are now alive and well and thriving, including the delicate El Segundo blue butterfly, which was the first insect to be listed as a federal endangered species. Fortunately, Los Angeles World Airports initiated a restoration project that reintroduced and protected the blue butterfly's only food source, the coastal buckwheat plant. As a result, the number of El Segundo blue butterflies has increased from a threatened few to more than 80,000. Not too long ago, coastal development threatened these unspoiled dunes, but thanks to Los Angeles World Airport's commitment to the environment, the LAX Dunes Restoration Project was created, which is one of the largest undeveloped pieces of coastal dune habitats in Southern California. While it may seem a strange place for a wildlife preserve, this tiny corner of nature is living proof of what can be accomplished when dedicated people work in harmony with their environment. A sustainability vision and principles policy adopted by the Board of Airport Commissioners has provided the extra impetus necessary to enable its three airports to continue to evolve into the greenest airports in the world. This policy forms the foundation upon which Los Angeles World Airport's program is built. And though its environmental journey is far from complete, Los Angeles World Airports is not only taking flight for a greener future, it is also working to preserve it for future
Moving is who we are, inside and out. We breathe in so that we can breathe out, so that we can breathe in again. We dream, awake and asleep. We laugh. We talk with our hands. We give it a whirl. We become. We move our bodies and minds in constant conversation. And no matter how much we do it, it's never enough. We know this to the core, that as long as we are breathing, there is moving to be done. Multiple sclerosis stops people from moving. People with MS understand something about moving that is hard for most of us to comprehend, that moving is not a guarantee.
MS is a disease that damages myelin, the protective tissue that surrounds the nerve fibers of the brain and spinal cord. When a person has MS, myelin is lost, and that leaves behind scar tissue called sclerosis.
The scar tissue disrupts the electrical impulses that move information from the brain to the body and makes movement difficult.
No one knows what causes MS, and there is no cure.
The effects of MS are unpredictable and show up in different ways in different people. One person may experience memory loss and fatigue, while another may suddenly lose the ability to see.
Someone might lose their balance and have trouble walking, while another may have slurred speech and tremors.
For some, the symptoms of MS come and go; in others, they last forever.
The National Multiple Sclero-
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. I want to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council. We meet, the council meets, every Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday at 10:00 a.m. Today, we are happy to be in the Valley. Before we get started, I believe, Madam Clerk, we should run through the agenda, so if you could please call the roll.
Alacon Buscayuna, Cardinals, Englander Garcetti, Weezer, Carras, Corcoran, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Zine, Weston, 12 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Parks moves, Ms. Perry seconds. What's next?
Committee resolutions for approval.
Okay, Mr. Englander moves, Mr. Alacon seconds. Okay, that should bring us to the agenda, so, members, I'd like to direct your attention to the agenda right now. Madam Clerk, if we could start off with the first three items, which I believe are items one through three?
Yes, items one through three are items for which public hearings have been held.
Any cards?
A public hearing has been held on these items.
Okay, so, members, any specials? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes. Excuse me, Mr. President, we just received cards for items six and sevens. We're already happy. So, would I reconsider those items at this moment?
Okay, so let's vote for reconsideration, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, so that brings us to what point?
Mr. President, you can do presentations at this time or general public comment.
Okay, do we have any general public comment?
Yes, we do have some cards for general public comment.
Okay, so then what we'll do is, I think we're still waiting a bit for presentations, so we'll begin our public comment with Arnold Sachs and John Walsh that are downtown at
Thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sachs. Interesting story in today's Daily Breeze. Supergirl Wendy Gru has done another audit, $7 million in L.A. gasoline bill unaccounted for. It's terrible. What makes it really ridiculous is, I believe, there's a columnist who writes for the L.A. Times, and he's written several stories about the mayor's, one of the people on the mayor's staff, and the SUV that he's always riding around in while the price of gas has been going skyrocketing. And yet, that has nothing to do with any amount of loss of gasoline fees or revenue that the city suffers through. It somewhat reminds me of all the time that was spent by the people who would come in here and discuss the city's ability to pay for fee waivers, to offer fee waivers to all these different projects for community affairs, and all the time that people were talking about that, the city council was waiving the fees for public safety at Staples Center and Dodger Stadium and the Coliseum and the Sports Arena and L.A. Live. So, people were here discussing thousands of dollars, and the city council is waiving fees amounting to maybe hundreds of thousands of dollars. What can you say? But the best part of this story, it's something you wouldn't do in a public sector. You mean, Wendy, would that be like the Gold Line Construction Authority that the Honorable Ed Reyes managed to resign from even though it didn't exist? Never mind resigning, he actually sat on the board for meetings when it didn't exist. Would you do that in public? Public? No, I don't think so.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. John Walsh.
Good morning. Welcome to an empty city council. And if we get our way and abolish the city council and put in a New York City-type city council with 40 people, there will be nobody up there. HollywoodHilands.org, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S blogging. Since the Zev Post, a week ago Sunday, 11 days, 106,000 visitors. Come and see the beheading of Wendy Gru by Garcetti on our website. I would like to direct you all to the best reporter in Los Angeles at, that's Alice Walton at City Maven. I'm asking you to go to her website, she reports on City Hall, before you even go to our website, and go to Last Friday and take a look at her extensive coverage of the Herb Wesson roast, where the mayor of the city of Los Angeles made a joke about, the fire department, Brian Cummings, made a joke about the response time being five minutes late. Well, is that funny to the people who burned to death because the response time was late? This was a so-called Diabetes Association fundraiser, we're asking for DA's investigation of the fundraising. The host, of course, was Mr. Englander, a member of the city council, and his lobbyist brother. How much did the roast cost, and how much was that deducted, the Wesson roast at the Hilton, was deducted from the money that people bought? The tickets were $500 apiece. And I'd like to repeat the joke, I'm going to clean it up, that Herb Wesson told about gay people. He talked about he was sexist, and he said, and he said, and homophobic. He said, "The mother effers deserve mother-in-laws like we do." And everybody laughed, and no one laughed harder than Rosendahl. You are all garbage.
Mr. Englander, I think, for response.
Just for a quick response, I just wanted to say, first of all, my brother's not involved in the organization, but it's the American Diabetes Association, and we've raised almost $8 million to find a cure for 24 million people that have diabetes in this country. And I have family members with diabetes. We do it all for free and for fun. And Mr. Wesson and many others put themselves out there to be roasted, to be humiliated, on the hot seat for a good cause, to raise money to find a cure for diabetes. And some jokes were said that way, but I'll tell you, if you work in this business, if you're involved at all in government or politics, particularly in these tough economic times, if you can't make fun of yourselves and each other to raise money for a good cause and have thick skin doing it, and then wake up the next day and go to work and work with everybody well to look, am I thin-skinned now? Just wanted to respond to that in saying that I applaud my council members, the mayor and all those who are involved to help find a cure for diabetes.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Alacon.
Yes, I just want to clarify a fact, the New York City Council has 50 council members, not 40.
Thank you, Mr. Alacon. If we could now have Sharon Brewer, followed by Herbert Thompson, and then we'll go to our presentation portion.
Hi, Sharon Brewer, welcome to the Valley. You haven't been here since last year. I wanted to speak about the redistricting and specifically the decision to not give a very small portion of the Spalva Basin that is directly adjacent to a community of like 400 houses. It was denied in the addendum, or recommended to be denied. You have houses that, their property line is right next to the Balboa Sports Center. And all that was asked was just to get that little bit of property that was below the L.A. River, west of Balboa. And this council, except for the two people who voted no on the maps, decided that it wasn't worth going and giving these residents a voice in what happens to them. This area is now in CD6, and the neighbors are in CD5. I can't believe that council members would not go and see that there's a problem with representing your constituents if the abutting property, which is the Spalva Basin owned by the Corps of Engineers, United States Corps of Engineers, not CD6, is being disenfranchised. There's no reason for CD6 to listen to these people because they're not voters. And again, to go and have this little bit of property in the basin denied to CD5 is basically unacceptable, and I do believe that a person has the right to disagree with other people, and that I commend some of those that have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, where's Mr. Thompson, Herbert Thompson, and then I have a card, and it just says Richard. So, Mr. Thompson, followed by Richard.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, sir.
I just want to introduce myself. My name is Herbert Thompson. I am affiliated with the NAACP, I'm on the executive board, I am the chairperson for housing. I'm also on the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council, I'm also on the executive board, and I'm also the outreach chairperson. I'm also affiliated with Pacoima Community Youth Cultural Center, I'm also the director, executive director of the center. I'm here today this morning to give support from the council of finding city property that we could occupy so we can continue our victims' rights outreach that we have going. We seek, we need housing, and we're at a standstill right now for finding somewhere to locate. If anyone on the board or any districts that can help me with this, I would so appreciate. Thanks.
Thank you. Richard.
Once again, there's another issue regarding Public Records Act requests. According to Mr. Garcetti, as he said on the record, it's supposed to be dealt with through the city clerk's and city attorney's office. Unfortunately, that was just a placebo, tacitly representing something. Based on the city clerk's office, they don't respond to what records that are in their possession. So if I ask, say, the city clerk's office, under 910 of the government code for records that Mr. Garcetti has, their position is, "You got to go call Mr. Garcetti's office." Then I also requested, "Why don't you forward it on to his office?" That's not our job. That's not our classification. Under 910 subsection D, under claim of damages, a Public Records Act request is an obligation. That's what the legislative intent is, that's what it says. But it appears, according to your city clerk, for one question, I have to ask each separate department in the city one question to find out if they can respond accordingly. So, it appears if I want to know the address of City Hall, I have to ask about 70 different separate Public Records Act requests because under 6352.1, nobody is able to assist me to formulate a question. There's always an excuse. All I get is laziness, no follow-through, lack of customer service. Today, I dissent and made and conferred to Mr. Wesson's office regarding a failure to respond to a Public Records Act request that was received, but it appears by his office, the 10 days only starts as when it's read, not received. That's not my problem. Then I'm being told, "Just go to the city attorney's office." Who do I talk to over there? I'm not their client. This is pure laziness, and it's a big problem. Should be ashamed of yourself.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, Madam City Attorney, that ends our general public comment portion of today's council meeting. With that said, Mr. Carras, are you prepared to move forward with your presentation? Then the floor is yours, sir. Then I also requested, "Why don't you forward it on to his office?" That's not our job. That's not our classification. Under 910 subsection D, under claim of damages, a Public Records Act request is an obligation. That's what the legislative intent is, that's what it says. But it appears, according to your city clerk, I have, for one question, I have to ask each separate department in the city, one question to find out if they can respond accordingly. So it appears if I want to know the address of City Hall, I have to ask about 70 different separate Public Records Act requests because under 6352.1, nobody is able to assist me to formulate a question. There's always an excuse. All I get is laziness, no follow-through, lack of customer service. Today, I dissent and made and conferred to Mr. Wesson's office regarding a failure to respond to a Public Records Act request that was received. But it appears by his office, the 10 days only starts is when it's read, not received. That's not my problem. Then I'm being told, "Just go to the city attorney's office." Who do I talk to over there? I'm not their client. This is pure laziness, and it's a big problem. Should be ashamed of yourself.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, Madam City Attorney, that ends our general public comment portion of today's council meeting. With that said, Mr. Corretts, are you prepared to move forward with your presentation? Then the floor is yours, sir.
Well, thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. Today, I'm here to recognize outstanding community leaders who helped make the 5th Council District in the city of Los Angeles a better place to work, live, and play. Standing here today, I have constituents of mine from all walks of life who serve on neighborhood councils, chambers of commerce, homeowners' associations, and beautification committees. These leaders have all created a positive impact on their communities, displaying leadership and enthusiasm when confronted with issues that represent, that affect their neighborhoods. They serve as role models day after day by rolling up their sleeves to solve problems within their community and constantly working to build consensus to accomplish their goals. Sadly, I have lost the communities that these leaders represent from my district during the course of redistricting, although I'll continue to work closely with them to help make the city a better place. While I take a moment to reflect on the great partnerships that we have forged, I would also like to look forward and let you know that you're in good hands with council members Labange and Krikorian and their staffs. It's been an honor and a privilege to represent all of you, and I'm forever grateful for the opportunity to have worked with you. I'd like to acknowledge the following organizations who are represented here. Sherman Oaks Chamber of Commerce, Sherman Village Homeowners, Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council, Sherman Oaks Beautification Committee, Sherman Oaks Homeowners Association. And I'd like to ask a representative of each to say a few words, starting with Jules Fear to represent both Sherman Oaks Beautification Committee and Sherman Oaks Homeowners Association.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate the recognition. We, boy, I tell you, we're going to miss our councilman, Paul Corretts and Paul Krikorian. It's a new day for us, but we're going to, I'm sure we'll do just fine. And we're looking forward to our association with Councilman Tom Labange. Thank you. We, the Sherman Oaks Beautification Committee has been around for some time now, and some of us are here. And it's a very important organization for us to take care of keeping the Sherman Oaks community a better place. We put on a couple of events every year of cleanup, along with volunteers from schools in the community. This May, we have our next cleanup event, and we're actually going to be painting street furniture to spruce up the community. So we take this very serious. We get a very good turnout. We're very active with that. And my people that are with me here, we work hard at it, and we appreciate all the support we get from the, from our city council. So thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to ask Jill Barad from the Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council to come up and say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Corretts, for this honor for our neighborhood council. And I want to just point out that our neighborhood council people who are here today, raise your hands so we can see. And we are very proud that we are one of the leading neighborhood councils in the city of Los Angeles, and we are going into our 10th year. And now, very proud of that. I have to mention that I'm gonna miss Paul Corretts and his staff, particularly Jeff Ebenstein, who is also on our, where is he? Who is also on our neighborhood council, and Wes Hernandez. They've been wonderful. They're very responsive to us. And it's been, it's really been a pleasure to work with Paul Corretts and all these years. Also, I'm gonna miss Paul Krikorian. He's been marvelous, and your staff is great. So we lose two Pauls, but we gain Tom. And I know that Tom is the cheerleader for the city of Los Angeles, and we hope that you'll be the cheerleader for Sherman Oaks. And we're looking forward to working with Tom, and we already this morning invited him to come to our neighborhood council. We'd like to have a reception for you and introduce you to the community. And we hope that we'll have successful relationship, I'm sure we will, with you and your staff. So thank you, city council, for honoring us in this way.
Thank you, Jill. Next, I'd like to have Robert Cohen from the Sherman Oaks Chamber say a few words.
Thanks, Paul. I'd like to welcome the city council here to the Valley. I want to thank Paul Corretts and Paul Krikorian. It's been a real pleasure having our Chamber of Commerce and our community be able to work with both of these city council members and their great staffs. It's a bittersweet type of a situation when you have such wonderful people that you get to work with and regularly. The staffs are just amazing, and they wouldn't be that way if they didn't have the leadership that they have. Our business community depends on this city for support in many ways, for protection, for keeping our roads that our people come and shop in our stores and at our centers. There are so many ways. We're blessed in Sherman Oaks to have the largest regional event in the Valley, the Sherman Oaks Street Fair, which this year I welcome you and invite you all to attend the 22nd Annual Sherman Oaks Street Fair, where we support our local schools. About $400,000 worth of donations have come through the years to our schools, and that wouldn't happen as well without the support of our councilmen and this city. So with that, our business community, even though we lose two councilmen that we work very close with, I am looking forward to working with councilmember Labange, Tom. It's gonna be a pleasure, I know. And since our communities, Sherman Oaks, got Encino on one side, Studio City, Van Nuys right next door, I imagine that the council members in those areas will still be working with us on many events as well. So we look forward to continuing our partnership with this city and with our councilmen. Thank you very much.
Mr. Corretts, we have a couple of members that would like to speak.
Could I have one more person?
Yes, go right ahead.
One more group, Sherman Village Homeowners, and I'd like to ask Genevieve Colvin to say a few words.
Hi, I'm Genevieve Colvin, and I am with the Sherman Village Homeowners Association. We had the great delight to work with Councilman Corretts's office on quality of life issues in our neighborhood. And after many, many, many years of not having our needs met, within a short period of time after Councilman Corretts took office, we had our needs met. And I think that that is a very important thing to understand about what Councilman Corretts and his staff has done for Sherman Village, is that we are a very small, small community. We're only 87 homes. But we were left out of the process of being gathered into the neighborhood councils when the lines were drawn. And as a result, many of our needs have not been met over the last 20, 30, 40 years. But within six months of taking office, we had our needs met. We had meetings with the Department of Transportation to address egress issues with the old North Hollywood Hospital that has since been demolished. We've had our streets repaved, which have not been repaved in over 50 years and had dramatic safety considerations that had not been addressed. And so I just, I feel a little devastated that we've lost our, we've lost our big advocate. So I look forward to meeting our new councilman. We are actually not sure because we can't read the map. And since we frequently can't, since we have been frequently left out of the process, I know that Councilman Corretts's office will make sure that we're in really good hands. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And congratulations, Paul. Mr. Garcetti, followed by Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and to Jules and Jill and Robert and Genevieve and to the entire group that's assembled here. I know it may seem like a sad day, and you've had two great gentlemen who have served you well. I assure you, bordering Mr. Labange, and for a moment when the lines were redrawn, I was actually, my home was drawn into Mr. Labange's district, and I was really happy about it. I said, you know, I know who to go to because I know he knows how to fix streets, and I've been wanting to complain to him for a while. But it is really, you've been blessed by three great council members. And as somebody who came straight home from the hospital to Woodcliff, my first house was there. My grandmother lived on Dickens Street. Although I lived in Encino and was raised on Woodley Avenue, I spent all my money in Sherman Oaks between the Lemley and Tower Records and the Guitar Center. So it is a marvelous community. The strength of this community that is here is really something to behold. And I know that both these gentlemen, you've just increased your power in this horseshoe. You don't just have two people, you have three, and I think you may say have 15 people who are your advocates. So congratulations on all you've done, and please call on any of us for what you need to do next. Thank you.
Mr. Labange.
And Mr. President, thank you, and Mr. Garcetti, thank you. And Paul and Paul, great representatives who are concerned about people. And when you mentioned, Ms. Colvin, about finishing, it's about the finishing line. The lines that are boundaries are just boundaries, but to finish community projects, I always use this too, cinematographer in Hollywood, if they were here, Paul, get next to Paul real quick, just because I want to make it right.
Tom's always good at stage directing.
No, no, no. They'd put their thumbs together, and this is a shot that I want. Two good leaders, concerned with great community leadership. When community leadership stands up between San Pedro and Chatsworth, from Borl Heights to Venice, it is people making a difference. And I just want to say, I'm excited about this. My only claim to the Valley is I went to West Valley Occupation and got 15 credits that allowed me to graduate from high school sooner. And I do remember going out to the Pacific Lodge Boys' home to play football before the Ventura Freeway was completed, which is older than Little Joe over there a long time ago. That being said, it's the leadership, Jill, that you've always been there. Renee Weitzer says hello, my deputy, who came from the Valley and was involved with the fight to stop the racetrack coming from Inglewood, to stop what was the overdevelopment of Sepulveda. She came from the community, my chief of planning, and she wanted to express special greetings to many of you who she knows, because it's all about a balance of community. And the village is a great movement. Neighborhoods are a great movement. We're a city of great neighborhoods, and I'm honored to represent all neighborhoods. And it is tough to, I feel for Paul and Paul, because you become, and the staffs, you become acquainted with people in their lives. But this is a process, and now you have people who are very familiar with your neighborhood, and I'm gonna learn all I can to help serve you as well as Paul and Paul has. And I especially want to thank Paul Corretts, who I've known just a little longer than Paul Krikorian, for his constant leadership over the years in a variety of ways, and as well as Mr. Krikorian in working on issues. We're a strong team to help all of you. Thank you to each and every one of you. Looking forward to working for Sherman Oaks' goodness. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Corretts. Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just wanted to echo Mr. Corretts's opening statement, if you will. It is a sad time when we've established such strong working relationships with a group to no longer be able to include that community within our district. But I think Mr. Labange is exactly right, and Mr. Garcetti mentioned it as well. Those relationships don't change just because boundaries change. And I think you can count on both Mr. Corretts and myself to continue to care deeply about Sherman Oaks. This is a community that I think has set the standard for our city in so many ways, whether it's through community empowerment through the neighborhood council and all the work that Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council has done and under Jill's leadership of both the Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council and the Valley Alliance of Neighborhood Councils. This is a neighborhood council that has shaped citywide policy about community empowerment. When it comes to the Chamber of Commerce and the work that Dr. Bob and the rest of the folks at the chamber have done, the advice that they've given me on jobs development issues have made a real difference. And I'm not just saying that just because he happens to also be my dentist. And of course, Jules Fear, the legendary Jules Fear, and the work that the Beautification Committee has done in identifying a vision for Sherman Oaks and making that vision a reality. That's a model that so many communities around our city should be trying to follow. And so I really want to congratulate Sherman Oaks on its ability to work together as a community and make such a positive difference for all of the people that live in Sherman Oaks, but also throughout the Valley and throughout the city of Los Angeles. So thank you very much, and believe me, you can continue to count on me to be not only your neighbor, but also your friend and an advocate.
Okay, thank you. Are we done, Mr. Corretts?
Just wanted to thank the council for giving us this opportunity, and thanks to this community for working so closely with both of our offices and really making a difference. So thank you so much.
All right. Again, let's give them another round of applause. Mr. Alakon, if you could proceed with our next presentation.
Mr. President, before I make my presentation, I want to point out that I believe today is Joe Buscagno's first meeting in the San Fernando Valley. In fact, I don't think he's ever been to the San Fernando Valley. And rumor has it that it took him 3 hours and 45 minutes to get here from the other time zone. Yeah, so we want to welcome him to the San Fernando Valley. Councilmembers, we have, you know, this is a very special timeframe that we live in for a lot of reasons. It's challenging, no doubt. And some of the people who have the toughest challenges are those people who have spent their life living here and not knowing that they may have been born in a different country. And as a result, notwithstanding their investment in their education and their desire to prosper in our country, they've been denied opportunities to go to college like all the other friends that they've been going to school with. And so I want to recognize a group of young people who have fought for those people so that they could be better in our society, so that they contribute more to our society and, in fact, have already contributed by virtue of being top in their class and performing at the highest rates to be able to be eligible for the college-going population. I want to recognize the San Fernando Valley Dream Team. Now, this is a young group of folks who organized throughout the San Fernando Valley to get support for the Dream Act, Gil Cidios Dream Act, that was signed by the governor that gives people who may be undocumented yet have met heavy criteria to get into college in addition to having gone to school for several years in this country and done very well. And these young people helped organize the effort from the San Fernando Valley, and I thought that they should be recognized. They're, they're not household names, but they're people who absolutely believe in American democracy and believe that when people come to this country with high expectations of achieving the American dream, that they have to be given respect in those efforts, particularly when they're doing the right thing. And that's exactly what these young people did. So what I'd like to do is introduce Javier Infante, the chair of the San Fernando Valley Dream Team, and thank them on behalf of the council for believing in the American dream and for fighting so that others who otherwise might be deprived of a college-going experience would have that opportunity. So with that, Javier Infante.
Thank you, Councilmember Alakon, for giving us this recognition here today. We are so honored to be here. We were just created a little bit over a year ago, and to think of all the things that we've come to do, being a rather small group, I feel so honored and I just send an awe with how much this group has, we've all done together. You know, we began in January 2011, and since then, our goal has been to spread more awareness about the issues that face undocumented youth here in the Valley. Being an undocumented student myself, I never had a group that I could go to Being an undocumented student myself, I never had a group that I could go to here community-based in the Valley, and so when I saw that lack of support, of really just having a more inclusive support of not only students themselves, dreamers themselves, but parents and allies and community members that know very well how it is to watch youth grow up, to having a dream and not being able to sometimes pursue that dream because of all the politics and bureaucracy behind education and the access to education. And so this work has not only been done by me, I mean, I gave ignition to this, but really the work has been done by all of us in the Dream Team, and half of us are not here today, but thank you so much for this time, and we are looking forward to continuing the work for undocumented youth and fighting for more equal access to education for everyone, not only in the Valley, but in the state and in the whole nation. So, thank you.
So on behalf of the City Council, I'd like to present this certificate of recognition to the San Fernando Valley Dream Team. And I want to mention that they were not just working in retrospect, they're moving forward to assist those who, notwithstanding the fact they may have been accepted into college, they are still going to have tremendous challenges going forward in terms of having access to the funding to go to college as well. So the San Fernando Dream Team, San Fernando Valley Dream Team is committed to helping gain those resources for these people. So on behalf of the City Council, I want to recognize you, but also give you this as a token and an investment in your future so that others may achieve the dream of a college education. Thank you.
Wait, you want to take one? He's going to take one photo shot. Now, we have Mr. Garcetti for a special presentation. Rarely do we have an opportunity to honor our bosses.
Yes.
Do we, Mr.?
Absolutely, Mr. West. Well, unless it's all of the people who are our boss, but of course, the specific boss that we have. I'd like to invite actually everybody who's here, for Jim Markloff to come on up and be behind us. You are the face of this presentation as well. And, Mr. President, it gives me great honor today to honor a dear friend of mine, Lieutenant James Markloff, who has served the people of Los Angeles with pride, determination, and enthusiasm for almost four decades in the Los Angeles Police Department. But he's more than just a friend, as Mr. Weston said, he's also my boss, serving in the United States Navy and the commanding officer of the unit that I currently serve in as well. So this is a real treat for me this morning. While Jim may have been surprised by this resolution, anyone who knows him and his commitment to the Los Angeles Police Department and to the people of Los Angeles knows that this honor that he's receiving today is well-deserved. Jim and I have served in the Navy together, but it is his fortitude and courage that was seen early on when he volunteered for the Marines during Vietnam. This type of bravery seems to have run in his family, as his father served in the Navy during World War II, along with his six uncles. But Jim's journey with the Los Angeles Police Department began shortly after the war ended, and he became a student worker for the Police Department in 1977. He opened the Southeast Area Station after working the Hollenbeck, Southwest, and 77th Stations. He monitored criminal gangs and became an amazing asset to the California Gang Task Force and the California Gang Investigators Association, making the streets of Los Angeles safer. And it's men like him who have brought our crime down to the lowest level since Dwight Eisenhower was president. He's worked in narcotics enforcement, the bomb squad, as a firearms expert for the LAPD. He's worked as a detective, a sergeant, a commanding officer, and served as lieutenant for the last 19 years, been in charge of the gang work in the West Bureau, and it's been wonderful to overlap both in our civilian and military lives. He would sometimes give me the heads-up of things that were happening in Hollywood, in my own area, as well as then getting to see each other on the weekends and in service in the Navy. And just when we think that Jim couldn't be even more impressive, he's remained true to Los Angeles's trademark industry and worked with Robert Duvall, Sean Penn, and Clint Eastwood, teaching them how to properly use firearms in a number of different movies. We might need to give Jim his own star on the Walk of Fame down the line. It's safe to say that Jim has done more than just to protect and serve Angelinos. He's lived his life with distinction, has proudly worked every day to serve others. On his free time, what little he has, he is a Knight of Columbus, a member of the American Legion, he supports disabled American veterans, and is an exemplary role model to his family and all of us who care about serving our wonderful city. Now, let me say a word about his second career in the United States Navy, because it is very difficult to balance the work that you do in both the Police Department and the United States Military. He is currently a Navy Reserve Captain. For those of you who don't know the Navy well, that's a full bird, that's like a colonel in all the other branches. It's extremely high, and I dare say that maybe one day he might even pin a star on. But he's currently my commanding officer of a joint service unit, and he plans on continuing his service even as he retires from Los Angeles Police Department. But I want to tell you where he has served in his military career. Besides Vietnam, Panama, Kuwait, Somalia, Thailand, Haiti, Afghanistan, and Iraq. He's gone on active deployments while being a police officer. He's taken time away from his family, his incredible family that is here, his wife Tanya, his four children, his daughter Kristen is here, and the newest addition to the family, Eric, great name, new baby that was born, how many days ago?
Eight days.
Eight days ago, which you see right here. There's Eric's debut as well. And his daughter Melissa, who's going to be joining the Los Angeles County District Attorney's Office Hardcore Gang Section, clearly fighting crime runs in the family. And I want to commend and applaud his family, who has supported him in both never knowing when he suited up as a Los Angeles Police Officer, that may be the last day on the job, and that sense of service that entire family embraces, and when he put on the uniform of this nation's military and go off for long periods of time, what that means as well. So I hope that you will all join me in commending and applauding Jim for his commitment to protecting our community, our country, wishing him, and this has kind of been quotes, best wishes for a happy and rewarding retirement, because for me, it just means he has more time to tell me what to do in the Navy, so there's really no retirement there. But I want to thank his entire family, and please join me in congratulating James D. Markloff, Lieutenant, Los Angeles Police Department, for his exemplary service to the people of LA. And I'd like to ask Chief Michael Moore to come forward to say a few words on behalf of the department as well, before we hear from Jim.
Good morning, Chief.
Thank you very much. Mr. President, good morning, members of the council. It's my pleasure to be out in the San Fernando Valley this morning on behalf of Chief Charlie Beck, to really honor and bring some recognition, just a moment, to a man who's so deserving, and that is Lieutenant Jim Markloff. What's little known, and Councilman Garcetti did a much better job than I can in describing Jim's accomplishments and his job that he's done, not only for the Police Department before our country, within the Navy, but what's also little known is that Jim Markloff was a classmate of Chief Charlie Beck, and so as they've, as he's, they've both completed the 35th year, he may offer you some insight as to the chief's actions on the firearms or track, or maybe perhaps in the classroom. Jim, in his last 35 years, there are certain words that easily come to mind with him. First of all, he's always been a man of integrity. He's had an intensity for any job, task, or assignment. When I worked with Jim as the, when I was the deputy chief on the West Side, we were struck by a series of hillside burglars. They were taking over the psyche, if you will, of the Santa Monica Mountains, the people that were worried about home invasions, late-night burglaries and prowls, and taking millions of dollars' worth of loot. And it was very destabilizing to that portion of the community. Lieutenant Markloff took that task on of organizing the task force that brought that down, that brought that enterprise to its knees, that resulted in the arrests of a number of individuals responsible, the recovery of hundreds of thousands of dollars of loot, and really the conviction of those individuals in putting them in jail where they deserved. What's little known is what's characteristic of Jim's performance in this department, is he did it without fanfare, without acclaim. He was always in the background, but he made things happen. And as a leader within this department, Jim is, has been the epitome of what we want are some 13,000 members of our organization, both sworn civilians to be. And that is a leader in any job, any position that they hold, that they don't look up, they don't look to the person with the stars or bars to make it happen, they look to themselves. And they organize, and they set themselves on a mission, and they make it happen. And so it's my proud honor today to be before you on behalf of Chief Charlie Beck and the men in the Los Angeles Police Department, to thank Lieutenant Markloff for his service, his dedication, to thank his beautiful family. There is not one of us in law enforcement, as members of this council know, who wear this same badge, that can do the job that we do without a family at home, without a loving wife, or husband, or family that is there to support us, that worry about us, but that put us back together again on some days, and other days just sit there alone wondering if we'll come back. But that stability, that reinforcement is huge. It's a sacrifice that we also say thank you to the family for. And it's also a great honor to stand here in front of such a beautiful family and friends, because frankly, as police officers, we're not always good about that, about bringing them along and having them here. So it is also a congratulations to Jim that you've done this path well. 35 years of service, you've served our country, you've served our city, you're a resident of the San Fernando Valley and a dedicated one, and to have a family here as well, and to have, be so well-staged for the next half of your life. You've got an A-plus right now. Keep it up. Keep it up. Thank you all.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I've known the lieutenant for many, many years, and when I see you with your wonderful family, you've always inspired people with your demeanor. And we look at the physical fitness, we talk about physical fitness. A man who has done that much time with the Los Angeles Police Department and the military, and to stay physically fit, and to stay dedicated to your family, and to have an eight-day-old grandchild, to be a granddaddy, and to have the accomplishments, and to have colleagues, family members, peers that are here, and have Chief Moore speak on behalf of Chief Beck on the wonderful accomplishments you've had. But I see you in action many times during my 33 years, and when you get to that point of 33 years, you're at 90%. You did two years after that, so you actually worked for 10% of your salary for the dedication of the people of Los Angeles. 10%. Well, she says it's okay, it's all right, no more shopping. But the fact of the matter is, your dedication, your inspiration, your true spirit of leading members of the Los Angeles Police Department is to be commended. And in addition to that, the time you dedicate for the military, and Mr. Garcetti, my good friend, who is part of that, not only a policymaker, but commitment to the people of this country as the military, which takes more time away from your personal life, more time away to do things for other people. But I want to congratulate you, I didn't know you were going to retire, and for people watching, when they look at those hash marks, for each five years of service, you get a hash mark. For each five years of service, because people look at that and say, certain departments give it three years, some departments get it four years, Los Angeles Police Department five years, for every five years, you get a hash mark, and when you see that hash mark coming up that arm, that shows the years of dedication to the people of this city. There's some officers next to you that have one hash mark, so you've got at least five years on the job, which is good. You've got a whole long way to go. But that's the desire to serve people in this beautiful city, and for your time at the academy, you've done so many assignments, but they've always been with desire, inspiration, and leadership. So I want to commend you on behalf of the retired folks, as I am, and Mr. Parks, another retired member of the fine Los Angeles Police Department, and now we've got Mr. Englander, who's a reserve officer, Mr. Busciano, who's a retired, or is going to be soon retired. I mean, it's changing focus, but you'll find the years of dedicated service stay with you, the years of commitment to the people stay with you, and to your beautiful family, congratulations for putting up with him for all those years, all those assignments, all those challenges, all those times when the family was going to get together, but you had to go to work for them to go through that for all those many, many years. Congratulations, you've done well, you've done excellent, and I know you'll continue with the military protecting this great country. God bless you, God bless your family. Thank you very much, Jim.
Mr. Englander.
Jim, I just wanted to say what an honor it is to congratulate the finest of the finest, a true American hero, and somebody who, after hearing your incredible history, not only serving the Los Angeles Police Department, but our country in the military, you're truly twice a citizen. And it's very rare to come across somebody, not only with your dedication and devotion and the honesty and ethics that you bring to the department, to the job, to your family, which shows, and you look at the smiling faces behind you, how proud they are. And I just want to say thank you. God bless you for everything you've done. You make us all look good. You make us strive to be better people. You are an inspiration to not only the men and women of the department, but I think citizens all over. And to have an American hero, which I truly think is deserving to call you an American hero before us, deserves ovation, it deserves applause, it deserves our gratitude, and I just want to say thank you and God bless you.
Mr. Busciano.
And just briefly, you know, he's your constituent too, so get ready.
Double thank you. No phone. Thank you, colleagues, and thank you, Mr. Garcetti, for bringing the fine lieutenant here in front of this body. Lieutenant, fresh, coming fresh off the streets of Los Angeles, I never had an opportunity to work for you, but I wish I did, especially listening to your resume and hearing the great things you've done, not only for this great city, but also for our country. And you are definitely a cop's cop, and I wanted to stand along with my colleagues and recognize your efforts in your 35 years of service to the city. Thank you. God bless you, God bless your family, and to see your bride in tears, I'm so proud of you. It's so refreshing and so, just neat to see that, and to see the love that surrounded around you and your family. You know, as Chief Moore alluded to, it's important that we have someone to go to at the end of the day, and to have a supporting and loving family, because in law enforcement, we come across the worst of the worst out in the streets, and it's just, it's a blessing to know that you have someone to go home to. And to see your officers and detectives surround you as well, and then Michael Gannon, who's here as well, to support you is also refreshing, to know that you're well-loved, not only with your family, but also your LAPD family. So thank you again on behalf of the city and for your years of service, and good luck to you. God bless you.
Mr. Labange.
Lieutenant, and I like what Chief Moore said, when you give someone a task, they get it done. I had the great honor of coaching the Los Angeles Police Department's attorneys, could have been 30 years ago or 31 years ago, right around there, and this was a great athlete, which many LAPD officers are. There are so many great athletes, Joe, who are from the Valley, who played Valley High School Football. Not too many guys from Pedro, but sorry, but anyway, there were great athletes from the Valley, but that was a great experience for me as a deputy for John Ferraro to coach, but also to work closely with the Police Department. But then, Mr. Garcetti, today, you bring in this great officer, you bring in his family, you bring in his commander, assistant chief, his colleagues, and it ties the whole circle. 35 years goes by so rapidly, but every day, Rocky, you serve the people of Los Angeles. And that badge that you wear is of the Grand City Hall of Los Angeles, which is the best badge any agency has in the world. And I quote Tommy Lasorda, the great Dodger manager, who would tell me, when he would go and they'd play the Mets, he would come in, and when they'd walk into the Shea Stadium, he'd say, "It's good to see the second-best police department in the world," when he saw NYPD. LAPD, great honor, great service, the United States, in the Navy, all I just ask you to do, make Mr. Garcetti do more push-ups, he's in for a track meet. Okay, congratulations, Rocky, good job, and to your family, and the eight-day-old, beautiful.
Okay, well, thank you very much, esteemed council members, and such a gust company here, behind me and to the left and right of me. Living the dream. It's not over yet, I got till May 1st, so I'm driving 45 miles an hour in the number four lane of the freeway, looking in 360 degrees all the time, and watching my, making sure I'm not following too closely someone else, because they tend to put on their brakes abruptly without any warning. So, you know, there's certain things, you know, there's, you know, thank you for the kind words, there's no heroes. There's ordinary men and women that are put in extraordinary situations, that's all. And I've seen it, I've seen it in this country, other countries, many, many times, and sometimes they don't survive that. And those are the toughest things to write, that I've had to write many times. But my family's been in the San Fernando Valley since 1938, and we're not going anywhere. So don't thank Councilman Englander, I'm going to pick up a phone.
I'm going to pick up a phone. We'll see each other as a constituent. I don't, and a phone doesn't work sometimes, as we know. But I learned a lot of things. I learned many things from Councilmember Parks many times. And we had some private discussions where I learned even more. And I used a lot of that wisdom, because if there's no mentoring and there's no proteges, then you're on your own. And in any organization, the Los Angeles Police Department, United States Military, Secretary Panetta is right off the coast of California this morning, riding in an LCAC, air cushion vehicle, talking to Marines. There's a lot of things going on. And what we do is basically try to prevent bad things from happening to the city of the United States of America. There's evil in the world, and people have to stand up to it. But you have to do it in the correct manner. And in the last probably 20 years, what I've found, that I've started really to understand and pass on to others, that you have to embrace things, and that you can't arrest yourself out of a problem. That's not the answer. Prevention, intervention, and reentry is. And I might be, you know, people look at me, I'm a Renaissance man, and I was a Neanderthal in the 70s. And I learned, and if I can learn, anybody can learn. So what you have to do is get smarter at what you do. And you can do it cheaper, or fiscally responsible, as the correct verbiage and colloquialisms used in this august chamber. However, you can do it. It just takes a will to do it. This city can do anything it wants to do, if it decides it wants to do it. And that's where we, just like this country, we argue amongst ourselves, but when we have one common foe, we unite and we win. We're an undefeated team, and we'll continue to be that. We'll lose some scrimmages, we'll lose a quarter, we'll be behind going into the fourth quarter, but we'll win the ballgame. I have complete confidence. And the next generations will have that task before them, so everybody can pitch in. I thank you very much. I'm proud to have served the Los Angeles Police Department, and I'm proud to serve the United States of America. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, where are we? Where are we on the agenda?
Item four, call special for cards.
Okay, on item four, John Walsh, Daniel Weisman, and Zuma Dogg, please come forward. Mr. Walsh?
Yeah. Already he's interrupting me. You cheated me last, the other time I was here on Tuesday out of a couple of minutes. Hollywood Highlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S.org, check us out. We are incidentally very happy about the way you run the REAP program. There are some things you do right. I don't get up here and say you're all a bunch of crooks. That little white guy, that's not John Walsh. HollywoodHighlands.org, keep the landlord's feet to the fire. You're doing a very good job. 30 seconds.
Mr. Sacks.
Okay, Mr. Weisman, I don't see Mr. Sacks. Thank you. I think you've been informed that I'm here in a slightly different role. I'm here as one of the members of the Budget Advocates. And I have in my hand the White Paper for this year. The White Paper has just been released by the Budget Advocates. I think you've all got copies of it. I commend it to you and to the people who are listening to us. There are several sections I think that you'll find particularly helpful. The 21 recommendations can serve as the hub of the wheel, because they'll focus on the individual issues that I think you'll find of interest, that we found of interest, and then the spokes of those wheels go out to explain them. I think if some of you have found difficulty in the maps and the charts, I have some paternal interest, both in these documents and in the 21 recommendations. This is a 60 percent reduction. So those of you who are having trouble printing them out, if you try a 60 percent reduction on your computer, I think it'll work better. If not, I certainly would encourage you to give me a call. I'll be sure that you get a good copy. I certainly think that this is the beginning of the process with which we will be going to the Budget and Finance Committee to work out a very serious set of problems. It seems they look even more serious every year, and this year is no exception. Thank you so much for hearing me, and I hope that we'll hear more from you and more interchange on this very important subject.
Thank you. Zuma Dogg, Matt Dowd, and Rick Nightingale.
Yes, this is a very important item, and please pay very close attention, because I heard Mayor Tonya Vieragosse say that he's going to have to lay off the other half of the workforce, and the city's not going to be able to withstand it. Okay, you're going to have rampant homelessness. Now, what happens is, this is rent escrow. What happens is the FBI is investigating the LA Housing Department for this very issue. So the first thing I'd like to say is, please release all properties from rent escrow. Due to the vindictive LA mafia Rico infiltration of the Housing Department, of which now it's a bribe and shakedown factory, of which people are illegally fined and feed, of which they then lose their property, of which then it creates more homelessness, and then people are driven out of the city. Now, the problem the city has, and it relates to this, is that you don't have any revenue coming into the city. Your projections were totally bogus BS fantasy land, non-reality. So for whatever the projections were, the reality is, your revenue is dead in the water, and now you've got to fire the rest of the workers, and you're going to be an incorporated city in the year 2015. The prophet speaks. Sad to say, this will have to become an incorporated city, taken over by the county in the year 2015, after this round of budget cuts and layoffs. And the reason is, you lose the revenue, because people can't afford to be in the city. They can't afford to live here. They can't afford to operate, because you illegally fine and feed people through your mafia Rico racketeering, to the point that the FBI is involved. And Barack Obama needs to be aware, because you know what he does? He needs the support of the LA people, so he goes and takes Mercedes Marquez. Mercedes Marquez of the Housing Department, in charge of the rent escrow program that is being investigated, and he appoints her. Way to go, go!
Thank you. Thank you. Matt Dowd, followed by Rick Nightingale.
All right. Thank you. Love the intimate setting. It's great, it's great, it's great, it's great. And get that in Spanish, too, to all the Spanish-speaking people out there. Matt Dowd from Venice Beach, want to talk about the rent escrow. I'll take a minute on this one. See, here's the thing, I think the people out there should seriously consider putting Zuma Dogg in for mayor, and here's why. Nothing else worked. Everyone else got problems. The city's in the worst place it could be. We've got problems with this rent escrow account program, all these investigations I hear about from the FBI. So that's a way to send a message, a real strong message about all these things going on in the city. Because it sounds like he knows what to do, and he's getting a lot of good information. And someone, it just sends a message, and that's what they need, especially at this time, when they're firing everybody.
Okay, Mr. Nightingale.
Yeah, Rick Nightingale. You know, I think it was a dirty shame that the way you handled the meeting Wednesday, that I had doctor's appointment, and I set it up, and you people turned around and went with giving presentations when you usually don't. I mean, it makes it very hard. Today, you turn around and took a public comment way early. I mean, I was only 10 minutes.
Speak to item four.
Very good. I got caught in the REAP program. As you realize, I made a big speech about it. I wish you would just turn around and give more information on what is really going on with the REAP. I finally got the information, but it took me forever to get the information, to finally say, "Hold it. I want a hearing." Nobody would tell me that. And soon as I said that, then I got put on a list, and all the investigations ceased, my fines ceased, until I had my hearing, and then it got all settled. I just wish you would turn around and tell them down the street here to give the right information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. One minute. Very good one.
Okay, Madam Clerk, on this item, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next item.
Mr. President, I believe there's a request to send item one forthwith.
Without objection.
Next, item six, call special for cards.
John Walsh downtown, Donna Pierman, and Rick Nightingale. So if we could start off downtown.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, 106,000 successful server requests within the last 11 days. This concerns the Spanish book fair, and I can't think of a better idea than a Spanish book fair. And I'm not being sarcastic. We are one city, understand? People are trying to turn blacks against browns in this city. The people who run things, of course, are all white. The people who run this city are all white. That's why we need a Spanish book fair. And I'm sure at the Spanish book fair, those people will be 100 percent behind Trayvon. Remember, if Barack Obama's aunt had married me, Trayvon would look a lot like I do. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. Night, Donna Pierman, and Rick Nightingale.
You also have a card for Batwoman. I hope you call that one. Anyway, let's see, this one is the, oh, yeah. Okay, now you have a special event for subsidies where you can spend waivers without the pesky public knowing. Do you know if your district, you know if your district considers a Latino or Spanish book fair an event they want to spend? How about the 250 people that are going to be fired? Well, they'll feel all warm and fuzzy, knowing that the waiver's still going while they try to go on unemployment. And I'm hoping at that Spanish book fair, they have some books for them to learn, help learn English, so they can go up in the world, because everybody wants to have success, you know, have comfort. I want to ask those who run for mayor, who will be most fair to the city employees?
Stay on the item.
Yeah, but will you remember, will you remember being fair, or you remember for doing special events? That's what I wanted to say. I wanted to compare one of these things. So we want to do it, you're doing these special, I see that we're coming back with special event fee waivers. In another way, you have a subsidy set apart for special event fee waivers, for special event fees. And so that you can just stick it in there and bring it over there, so that you can, the spending for this, it's not whether this Latino book fair is good, it's probably a very good thing to have a Latino book fair. But we also, I still believe that you should be able to have some books to help them learn English, because if you're in America, unfortunately, the best, the ones who are bilingual and not just one-lingual is Spanish, will go a lot more places. So I hope that we do that, and remember, it's the best way, and helping them the most is helping them to be able to think, read, and, yeah, think English, read English, along with their own language. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rick Nightingale, followed by Batwoman and Zuma Dogg, and then Matt Dowd.
Yes. I think a book fair on anything is good, because you can't have too much to learn. But my problem is, is that why don't people try to learn English beforehand to turn around and go and try to get a book? Mr. Alakon and I, we grew up in the same neighborhood. Back in our day, everybody turns around, their family wanted them to learn English. When they went to school, they blended into the system where they would learn. Today, it's not that way. They just don't, they, the family, like I said, my family has an apartment building, they won't teach the kids English. They've turned around, and I have tenants that I'm very friendly with, I talk to them, I want to know what's going on, and they think it's a downgrade to turn around and learn English, to turn around and keep it and keep speaking Spanish. Even if the family knows how to speak English, the whole family, they won't teach the kid the English, because I hear them. Now, what good is it going to do? This is why they don't learn in schools. The book fair, are they going to be all in English? No. Look at, they are closing the colleges for these people that will want to go there and learn. Now, if you turn around and go to a book fair, where's, what's it going to be in? What language? Do they put it in Spanish and English at the same time so they can learn? I don't know. But this is the whole problem of our system, of why people to learn. And I don't know why the school board won't go it. Now they're going back to having a bilingual class again. It didn't work. I worked for the school board. They had a teacher teaching, and they had another woman teaching, speaking Spanish for the person to try and learn. Since when does it go between two people and it comes out the same way? I've never heard of it. So I'm completely for a book fair, and I'm glad you're doing it.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Alakon.
I just want to express that Mr. Nightingale's presentation has convinced me that we really do need to improve our English skills. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alakon. Batwoman, followed by Zuma Dogg and Matt Dowd.
I pass on this.
No, I'm renaming myself, too. So that's my nickname. Anyway, that I think this is, this country was based on English as the official language here. You know, for us to be united, folks, and to be together, we need to all be speaking together in one common language. You talk about diversity, how are you supposed to learn from one another? If people are born here who primarily learns English, who don't know the other languages, it'd be interesting to have people teaching you their cultures and everything through English. I think this is imperative and rather important that we keep this in part of our basis of our country here. And of course, the First Amendment is very germane with this issue, keeping English as our official language, to be able to express ourselves very, very much here. And I don't know why you want to put this money just like this, because the thing is, you should be emphasizing English as the official language. You should be gearing these people away from, you know, being, you know, away from other countries. They come here to learn here, to be here Americans. We want them to be Americans. So that way, this way, we need to have them here, to understand our way of life here. So if you're going to ask other people to give up things, to give up their monies and everything, you know, I don't know why you're thinking that English is not important according to this. I don't like bilingual, okay? It discourages people learning the basis of our country, and that's English. Thank you.
Mr. Matt Dowd.
All right. I disagree. This is a great item, of course, unanimous vote, and here's why. See, first of all, my wife speaks Spanish fluently. She was born in the Dominican Republic to German, to German parents who spoke German. And then she went to school over on the border of Germany and France, so she speaks fluent French. So she got me on three, and I'd love to learn Spanish, too, so, you know, because, you know, it's a continent here now, and there's millions and millions of Spanish-speaking people. And you're doing yourself a disservice if you're not trying to go halfway to meet them and work with them, because they're here. We're all here. We're not going away. So it's one of my things, mediation is sadly lacking from the city. If you vote yes on this, you should start talking to me.
Okay, that last speaker on this item, let's open the roll. Okay, that last speaker on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Next.
Item seven, call for cards.
John Walsh, Donna Pierman, Rick Nightingale. John Walsh. Donna, since you're here, you, no, here he comes.
I just thought I'd wear a Trayvon hoodie, because Bobby Rush wore that in Congress and got thrown out.
Let's stay on the item.
I may be thrown out, okay. But I can't wear the hoodie, I've been told I can't wear the hoodie or I'll get thrown out like Bobby Rush.
You have to stay on the item.
Now that'll go on the issue, it's on the record. This issue of, this is much different from the previous issue. This is a bar association mixer, which, uh, the city is now going to spend four, has already spent $406 of overtime for city employees so they can sit around and eat hors d'oeuvres. Meanwhile, as Mr. McCosker said, someone was clinically dead from choking in Century City last week, and the paramedics arrived one minute longer than it would have taken if the closest firehouse was there. In other words, about $406 worth of, was one minute. And fortunately, they saved their lives. But we live in a city where the bar association gets $406, and you know what happens to the, uh, to the fire department? They get bupkis. If you don't know what bupkis is, go to a Yiddish dictionary. Find out about the adulterer who's running for mayor. Thank you.
Donna Pierman, Rick Nightingale.
Yeah, we need to, uh, stop the spending. We're in economic trouble, and now we have this Latino lawyer, uh, reception. We spend it, uh, with, 250 people are going to lose their jobs, and our city's in economic trouble, and they want to have reception for Latino lawyers. And it shouldn't be paid by well-paid lawyers, uh, or tax, uh, tax, have a tax write-off, donations for private parties, donations for politicians. I can see this in a very good way, and then we can have a lot of publicity for them. I can see it in a lot better way than just being hidden down in this thing where the city pays for it. I can see it a lot better way, and then a lot more people will know about, uh, who is the Latino lawyers and what they're doing and how well they're, you know, what contributions they're making. And then, uh, that can be known by people having private donations. A lot more people will be a lot more interested in what is going along over here than if we do it just by, uh, stinging it back out of the city. So I don't think you're using it in a good enough way to, uh, bring, spread out exactly what they're doing. All I know is our city is also, our city is in problems. Our city employees are, are not being taken care of, and we need to work on this thing with the retiree healthcare for the sanitation and bring it back to being fair.
Stick on the item.
So, uh, I want to bring it, so we want to have, let's bring, uh, let's protect private donations for, I like to have private donations, and the politicians who are Latino, uh, help pay for this, and then maybe it might be spread a lot better, because I don't think it's going to be spread. I think it's going to be hidden under the carpet and it's not going to do any, any good. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Nightingale, followed by Batwoman and Matt Dowd.
I'd like to pass, please.
Okay, Rick, Mr. Nightingale passes.
Pass.
Mary Ann or Batwoman?
Well, I'm going to just speak a minute on this to reiterate what I said earlier, is that this country was founded on everybody being able to be here, uh, on the basis of, of, uh, being a good American, becoming Americans, and not having illegals coming here and taking...
Stick on the item.
Okay? The, the people who are coming here legitimately not wanting to learn English, okay? The ones that, that want to not be part of our group here.
Miss, Mary Ann?
That's very important that we all be together here.
Mary Ann, stay on the item. It's about a cause for a Latino Lawyers Association event. So stick to that.
Well, this is rather, this is rather saying, uh, you can only be Latino. I think it should be for everybody. I think it should, should be inclusive. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. See, if you're going to be a crime fighter name though, you've got to be fighting for the good. And this is a good thing, this is fine, you know, this unanimous vote, and I'm serious. Congratulations, Mr. Puscano, on, uh, item six too, uh, being going through. See, and here's why, they're paying it back. They just want the rotunda, some attorneys, to have a, a meet and greet and whatever in the city hall. Who cares? And they're reimbursing this stupid $200 back to the general fund. So clearly, the, you know, you've got to discount some of the comments, and that, that's pretty obvious, I think. And that's why we don't need people jumping up and down, going, oh, did, 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 this and that, and this and that about the comments, because people are pretty smart, they're sophisticated out there. You betcha, the people watching TV. Thank you.
Mr. Kukorian, did you want to say something on this item?
Well, I didn't think I'd ever say this, but I actually wanted to say what Matt Dowd just said, uh, which is that, uh, this is a $406 technical transfer, uh, the entire amount of the $406 is going to be reimbursed by the Latino Lawyers Bar Association. So I just didn't want anyone in the public to get the wrong impression that this was a use of public money to sponsor this private event. It, it is going to be entirely reimbursed.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Kukorian. Not only is this at no cost, this was an event that's open to all people, um, and it celebrated a wonderful lawyer named Sylvia Torres Guillen. And we talk about, uh, this nation being open to all people and being a part, she is somebody who has lived here, was, worked as a lawyer for many years, and was appointed, uh, by our governor to head up, um, labor work for this state. And she told a very powerful story of what it was like to go to the Central Valley and to see women who are working in the, in the fields, who are picking our food, who came up to her, the first Latina to ever hold this position, and be able to speak to her in Spanish and to say, "We finally know that there's somebody who is out there, who is defending us and who is like us." That is what America's about, whether you're an Italian immigrant, whether you're an Irish immigrant, whether you're a descendant of slaves, uh, whether you came here from, uh, Latin America or elsewhere. Let us look closely what these resolutions are before we start the incendiary language sometimes that we hear.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Keretz.
If I could just add for the record that I believe that each and every member of the Latina Bar Association is also a fluent English speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Keretz. On this item, Madam Clerk, if we could open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Next item.
Item eight, call for cards.
John Walsh downtown, Arnold Sacks downtown, and Zuma Dog. Wait, who, Mr. Walsh has one minute, I'm informed.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, come and see, uh, the cyber art of Mickey Jackson, of Garcetti beheading Wendy Grohl.
Let's stay on the item.
Okay, I'm going to stay on the item. This is potholes, the city is full of potholes, they're doing a, I'm glad Labonge cares about his district and is fixing up his district, because Eric isn't. And incidentally, the money's reimbursable, fine. You have 50 to 100 million dollars of bad debts. I believe it's reimbursed when they get the money.
Stay on the subject. Stay on the subject. Okay, the next speaker is Arnold Sacks.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. Um, another special fund, the Street Furniture Revenue Fund, to be used for potholes, which I'm also sure could also be used maybe to repair sidewalks and make, uh, make sidewalks also ADA-compliant. But another part of this item, account number 1090, salaries overtime. So it asks Mr. Garcetti, Councilman Garcetti, um, because again, like the item prior, where the funds will be reimbursed, that also included overtime salaries.
Stay on this item.
Mr. Wesson, the item's about overtime, okay? So I'm staying on the item. I'm using it as an example, okay? That item is being reimbursed. This item, salaries overtime, isn't being reimbursed.
This is about repairing pothole. Arnold, look, it's, you're not on the subject, the subject, stay on the subject.
Account number 1090...
If you want to speak, you want to speak, but I'm not going to argue with you.
Account number 1090, salaries overtime.
So you need the agenda, you stay on the subject.
Account number 1090, salaries overtime is part of the item on the agenda. The item is being paid for with overtime.
This is relative to fixing potholes on Wilshire Boulevard.
And it's being paid for with overtime.
Okay, Mr. Sacks, your time is done. Mr. Zuma Dog.
Boy, you're... Yes, thank you, City Council, and to the fine constituents watching at home. My name's Zuma Dog, 2013 candidate for mayor, and you can read more about this and all the city items at zumadog.com. Now, here's something I'd like to know. Uh, this is money in Tom Labonge's district. It's supposed to be for street furniture, but they're doing the bamboozle, uh, transfer for pothole repairs. I have a question. What happened to the money for pothole repairs? I thought there was already money that's supposed to be for street services for pothole repairs. So how come we have to now take money for something else? Okay, it's because you squandered, pilfered, wasted, corrupted the money away, and because the city hall is under control of a Rico mafia that has seized these council puppets and have forced them to do the most irrational, illogical things with the money until it is so broke that they don't have money to do anything, so now Labonge is pulling out. By the way, people, 6,500 bucks to fill the potholes. Let me ask a question. With the price of union workers and the price of, uh, the materials and the equipment, when you drive down Wilshire in Labonge's district, you're going to need a new car for all the tire damage and axle damage. Even the people in Bentley's and the BMWs complain. Zuma Dog, we will pay you if you can get Labonge and Keretz to fix the potholes. We can't take it on our BMWs and Bentley's, and we're going to vote for other people next time. So my question is, for a lousy 6,500 dollars, how many potholes does that repair? And I'd also like to go on record, I was contacted by the people that fill these potholes, and they don't do it properly. You're supposed to put this like real fine micro particle stuff first, and then you put in the asphalt. Otherwise, the pothole pops out again, and then you have to do it again, and that costs double the money.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Labonge, did you want to speak now? I have two more cards, though. So, uh, Matt Dowd and Rick Nightingale, please come forward.
One minute, Matthew.
Yes, thank you. Great item too, because I was just talking to the reporter from the LA Weekly, and this is the asphalt item, so it's kind of connected. Anyway, because there's a bunch of that in the back of the LA Weekly, but let me talk about this, a good thing, this is what we would do, well, okay, let me not say "we", because I'm not in there. But if I was in the city council officially, this is the first thing we'd be doing for the constituents, is fixing the basic things and not worrying about, you know, high-density housing development and all these things. A lot of people go, "Oh, we need this, we need that." But this is what the people want, is the pothole repairs, first and foremost, and they're lacking. The mayor promised a bunch of them. So thank you, Tom Labonge, Herb Wesson, for doing at least 6,000 dollars worth out in CD, 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 CD what?
Four.
Four, of course, I was looking at the wrong item. Thank you, Bill Rosen Dellto, for bringing us up here.
Thank you, Matt. Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much. This is a gentleman here speaking at the podium, did you call?
Oh, Rick, Mr. Nightingale, I forgot about you. Please come forward. Please come, please come forward. I, I apologize.
No problem. Yeah, Rick Nightingale. Uh, I don't want to get off topic, but, you know, it really upset me that you took, uh, public comment ahead. I come for that, I come a long distance, and it cost me gas, time, and so forth. I missed it Wednesday, I missed it today. Very upsetting. This, on your potholes, okay, I go along with it. But, people don't realize that we were supposed to, uh, the, the, the gas tax is supposed to be paying for road repairs and so forth. Where is that money? That you take that money, you put it in general fund, and then you turn around, and then we get the leftover peanuts to turn around and fix the potholes. I live over here in Sherwood Forest, and that, I have, we, I have very nice homes over there, I hate to say it, but the thing is, I've been after them to turn around and fix the street that we can't even drive over. They have, uh, we have trees in the middle of the, of the thing, of the, of the road, and the roots are growing, and they are six to eight inches high, and I, you can't even drive over. I can't even drive my Corvette over it, no, forget it. I went to, uh, Councilman Smith, the CFE would fix it, he says, "Costs too much money to fix that, because I can fix five other streets." We have to tear that one hole all up. What do we have to do to turn around and get these things fixed? I mean, I think the taxes that I pay and the people my neighbors pay, we should get something done. But it's not getting done. They just forget about it, and we have to drive around it, and that's it. I just wish that we could turn around and the money that is allotted to fix this stuff would go to where it goes. That's why I keep saying, embezzlement. If you people were in a corporation, you'd be arrested for turning around and not putting the money where it's supposed to go. If you turned around and paid your bills that way, it wouldn't happen. Because, I remember my mother, "We have so much money to pay this, so much money to pay that, so much money to pay that, so much money to pay that." And if you don't put it that way, you are not going to pay all your bills. And the same thing is with this. You turn around and use it for other things and not pay the bills for the potholes because, "Oh, we don't care about that."
Thank you, Mr. Nightingale. Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much for the public's benefit. The Street Furniture Fund comes from the revenue that the city of Los Angeles receives from the bus bench advertising throughout the city of Los Angeles. Along with, uh, my colleague, Mr. Wesson, this part of Wilshire Boulevard, which is the busiest bus route street in North America west of Manhattan, has tremendous challenges in the curb lane because of the weight and deterioration of the water, uh, in that area. On a Saturday, they're able to not disrupt the normal traffic. Mr. Wesson, I thank you for the pass, and I thank you for this on the future, as we continue to try to make it easier, not just for the motorists, but for the bus-riding public on this section of Wilshire Boulevard. I ask for an aye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge, and if you could make your way up, up here, let's open the roll on this item, Madam Clerk, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, what's the next item?
Item nine, call for cards.
Thank you very much. John Walsh, Arnold Sacks. John Walsh is out of time, so John, have a good weekend. Arnold Sacks.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Labonge. Um, just speaking, speaking English, English and not metaphorically, um, this lease executed between the city of Los Angeles through the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment on behalf of the Empowerment Congress West Area Neighborhood District Council. That's what it says on your agenda item. So, based on that, and how many neighborhood councils are there? Maybe there's four per district, maybe there's five, maybe there's 80, 90, 100? So, if each one of them have a lease, then each one would be empowered by the Congress of whatever neighborhood council, whatever neighborhood district council they're referred to? That seems awfully incredible. And, by the way, no overtime is involved in this, is it? Because overtime usually means time and a half, Mr. Wesson. So when you charge time and a half, you get less labor, more salary. That was my question. And, that's about it. Have a good weekend.
Also in the John Feral Chambers, Dixie, is that correct? And, uh, the first name, Jamar? Forgive me if I mispronounce it, is there a person by the name of Dixie?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Uh, hello, my name is Jamar Dixie, and, um, I'm just a little, uh, curious as to how, how the function of empowerment of council was going to use the space and, um, the time allotted, and what are the actual terms in the agreement or previous agreement that, uh, is stated here November 4th, 2011? So that's my, 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 um... So that's my statement to it. I would be for it if it serves the benefit. But, you know, I'm just a little curious as to what benefit does it serve for the extra or the empowerment or extra space needed?
Thank you very much. We have other cards here in the San Fernando Valley. Mr. Dowd, you're out of time. Mr. Nightingale, you're out of time. Thank you very much. Now I'd like to call on David Salzman, is that correct? David? Thank you very much.
Zuma Dog?
Yes, David Salzman?
Does it say--
Same, same. Just wanted to get it straight. Zuma Dog, let's go.
Does it say-- I don't know who put it in a card. Did somebody put it in a card with that name on it?
No, I was wanting to make sure I was correctly addressing you. Thank you very much.
Oh, isn't it just comedy hour here at the L.A. City Council meeting? Boom, brown act violation. Okay, now, I would like to also emphasize what the previous speaker said. It doesn't say how much money is being used here for the empowerment offices, of which we're about to lay off the other half of the city workforce until you're not able to do anything. And now we're gonna spend money for this empowerment office space, of which we don't know how much. Also, it says retroactively. Approve retroactively. What type-- Krikorian, stand up and explain the budget implication. Now, why are we approving things retroactively? What kind of third-world city are we going into where we don't have the administrative staff to execute things like lease agreements for the empowerment neighborhood councils, okay? So you blew everything so badly, and so now you have to do things retroactively. Now, let's just talk. So I would like to see, have somebody tell me how much this is and why it's retroactive, and if the city is so bad off it can't even execute a lousy, stupid lease agreement for some office space anymore. But now let's talk about the empowerment. And please be careful, I'm gonna be on topic, because this is about the empowerment. And I happen to be-- I bet people didn't know this, that the mayoral candidate-- I happen to be recognized internationally as a quality and productivity consultant on the topic of empowerment. My credential is Dr. W. Edwards Deming, the 14 points of quality. So what empowerment is and what I want this space to be used for, all the city workers, I believe, have the information and knowledge on how to get things done under this economic crisis of which you have to do more with less. It's called fudge factor. Now, unfortunately, the biggest enemy to improvement is city council and city hall itself. They are the biggest roadblock to efficiency. So, Zuma Dog, L.A. Candidate for Mayor, is here to empower all city workers now. You have it within yourself to do your job efficiently, the way you know how to do, but you've been prevented from the city council and from the mayor. And so I am now empowering you to please show up at this empowerment zone meeting--
Thank you.
--and come up with ways-- Oh, I'm out of time.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Dowd and Mr. Nightingale, I've been informed that you have reached your maximum. So they did recalculate it, and you have no more time for today. So with that, with that said, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Mr. Krikorian.
Well, Mr. President, I just wanted to clarify on that item because some of the public comment was incorrect. This is simply approval of a neighborhood council's lease agreement. All of the 95 neighborhood councils of the city are entitled to enter into lease agreements. This has zero impact on the general fund because it already is coming from that neighborhood council's budget. It's simply an administrative process that the city has to approve the lease that they've entered into. That's all.
Thank you for that clarification. So on this item, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, what do we have left on the agenda?
Council has motions for post-nary referral.
Without objection.
That clears the desk.
Announcements, members, announcements? Mr. LeBonge for an announcement.
No fooling, tomorrow is April 1st.
Thank you very much. No more announcements? If we could all rise-- Oh, Mr. Alacon.
Yes, council members, I want to mention to the millions of people who are viewing this on Channel 35, that tomorrow in the 7th Council District at the Northeast Valley Neighborhood City Hall, the new city hall on Venice Boulevard in Pacoima, if you want to get your finances in shape, come to a free financial fitness day from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., again at the city hall in Pacoima. And it's especially targeting senior citizens, so we hope that many seniors will have the opportunity to come out. I want to thank the Daily News for inserting this in their newspaper. Also, I want to speak on behalf of the Youth Policy Institute, which is having a youth services community jam. So after you get your finances fixed, you can then go over to this youth jam. It says, "Peace and Love. Express Yourself. Come Showcase Your Love and Talent." Student performances include singing, dancing, theater, music, DJ, and more. So it doesn't say where, but I'm sure it's somewhere in the 7th Council District. Call my office, and we'll be happy to tell you where it is.
No more announcements? I'd like to rec-- everybody, please rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Garcetti has an announcement.
Yeah, just a quick announcement. We're gonna be having a cleanup in Echo Park on Sunset Boulevard tomorrow. Echo Park Improvement Association is going to be meeting up at 9:00 in the morning, and you can meet over at the warehouse, which is 1197 West Sunset Boulevard. And we'll be cleaning up all morning on Echo Park, so come on by. Hope to see you there.
Mr. Alacon for another announcement.
Mr. President, I aired. It does say where. It's at Panorama High School from 12:00 to 2:30. So please come out to the youth services community jam.
Thank you, Mr. Englander, followed by Mr. LeBonge.
Okay, well, in Mr. Zein's district tonight, we've got a fun event for Club de Cuba, for the Boys and Girls Club of the West Valley. I'm making this announcement since I'm not only on the board of the Boys and Girls Club, but I'm also Mr. Zein's council member starting July 1st, so I figure I might as well start taking over now. Thank you.
Mr. LeBonge.
I want to correct myself. Madam Clerk, the 1st of April is on Sunday.
Ahah. Okay, now, everybody in council chambers, Ms. Brewer, everybody, please rise. This is for an adjourning motion. Then Mr. Zein is at the podium for an adjourning motion. If everybody could please rise.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Fogler? Please rise. Medical-- go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Charles Nylon Scott, passed away March 13th. Director Emeritus, Los Angeles Police Federal Credit Union. Born June 29, 1937, in Texas. Passed away March 13th in Fresno. Moved to California as a young child after graduating from high school. Moved to the City of Los Angeles where he secured employment with the City of Los Angeles Controller's Office for 14 years. Continued serving the public as a civilian service for the Los Angeles Police Department in 1984. By the time he retired from the LAPD as department chief accountant in 1997, he had served as past president of the Los Angeles City Employees Accounts and Auditors Association. He gave more of his time in support of the LAPD while he worked at his various city posts. Began voluntary service at the Los Angeles Police Federal Credit Union, serving in 1986 when he joined the supervisory committee. His good work, integrity, and ability led him to become the director in 1988. Continuing his service, he served multiple terms as chairman of the Board of Directors, as well as serving as chair of the Member in Industrial Relations Committee and bylaws and credit committees on the board until he became director emeritus in 2011. A man of great integrity, pride and civic pride, Mr. Scott was a father, grandfather, great-grandfather, and brother. Charles Scott was a humble man, who was both loving and giving. The legacy he leaves, both professionally and personally, is one we can all aspire to. As testimony to his-- some of his colleagues have come here to witness this adjourning motion. I ask that we show our respect for him and for his great work for the people of Los Angeles for the so many years. Survived by his wife, T.J. Scott, his children, Nylon, Kimberly Ann, Laverne, Carolyn, Kimberly, Camille, Donna, Davian, as well as numerous grandchildren, great-grandchildren, nieces, nephews, and longtime friends. And I remember seeing him many, many times at city hall, and many, many times throughout the city of Los Angeles. And we have with us, joining in this adjourning motion, is Mike Paget, who's the CEO of the L.A. Police Federal Credit Union, and Carolyn Scott Jackson, the daughter of Charles Scott. And just a couple words from you, and then from you.
First of all, I would like to say thank you for this tribute to my dad and recognizing him for all the work that he's done with the LAPD Credit Union. He really enjoyed that. Strong individual with his thoughts and so forth with his work. A wonderful person, as everyone has stated, and an outstanding father. I can go on and on and keep you here all day, but I won't. But I want to say thank you.
Mike.
I just want to thank the council for honoring and honorable and deserving man. Thank you.
And one thing about Charles Scott, he always wore a medallion. You'd always see him wearing a medallion. And he was always smiling, always friendly. I remember my time with the LAPD, seeing him in different parts of the city, but he always had that medallion. When I heard it was passed, and I wanted to show respect for all that he has done for the people of Los Angeles for so many years. So may he rest in peace. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Zein. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. Colleagues asked that we adjourn today in memory of Alexis Rivera, a community activist who died Wednesday, March 28th, of complications related to HIV. Alexis Rivera was a proud queer transgendered woman who was born and raised in Los Angeles. She was involved in the transgendered community for the past 15 years, beginning her activism as a teenager, doing street outreach to LGBT youth in Hollywood. And she was well-known in my district. She eventually became a case manager and later the first program director for an incredible program at Children's Hospital Los Angeles. It's their iconic tranny rock star program. And she helped provide vital support services to hundreds of transgendered youth in Los Angeles. She touched so many lives, will always be remembered with respect and honored for the woman she was. She passed away at the young age of 34. She was a mother. She became a grandmother a month before she died, was a sister, a daughter, a granddaughter, and an aunt, a mentor to so many, and a friend to many. Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl, second.
Any more adjourning motions? Mr. LeBonge.
Members, I ask for adjourning. In memory of John Aguirre, who's a brother, a loving brother of the senior administrator in the Hollywood Division. We ask that-- we all remember John Aguirre as being a great man who came from this earth too early, survived by his mother, along with Sister Sylvia and partner Jeff Ransom. Just in that, I'd like to adjour in memory of Chuck Hollis. Chuck Hollis was an assignment editor for many years in local television, one of the first African-Americans in a newsroom, was a reporter, was known and loved by the people that he worked with. Last night, I ran into two photographers in Hollywood who were having dinner, and they remarked about what a special guy this was. Chuck Hollis knew how to get it done, to grab the camera, to encourage the reporter to capture the story, to make it industry for the Southern California television public. He passed away just this week.